I'll call this meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Layland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Felka?
Here.
White?
Here.
Here. Please join us in a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertain a motion on the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Yes, we moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Next is public comments. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak to the board on something that's not an agenda item? Anybody online? Alright, seeing none, we will move on to claims and payments.
Morning, James.
Morning, Board.
Morning.
This week's expenditure is $166,103.16. The two larger departments were $43,435 for the Sheriff's Department and Secretary of Roads at $20,116. Everything works normal.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Resolution is approved. Next, we have a presentation from the new county social services CEO to do an introduction.
I don't believe she's on camera either, but she got an emergency, had an emergency going through.
Okay.
She had to go to Suragordo County. They're one of the counties that are dropping out, and she's trying to...
Putting out fires today?
Yeah.
Okay.
A few fires up there.
Right. Alright, we will move on to receive project updates from department heads or elected officials.
Morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. This morning, I wanted to update you on two bridges that you need to be aware of. Several months ago, we, I've told you that we closed Wheeler Road Bridge due to a recent inspection. I'm sorry, we didn't close it. We posted it at three tons. And this is the portion of Wheeler Road that is just north of Dunkerton Road. So it's east of the city of Dunkerton, north of Dunkerton Road between Dunkerton and Mount Vernon. There's a structure over Crane Creek there that is posted at three tons. We can no longer, obviously, take our snowplows over that bridge. That is going to force us to plow up to that bridge in both directions and dump the snow there at the, at the bridge. Obviously, this would become a safety hazard, so we are choosing to put up barricades so that people do not run into those snowbanks. We are anticipating doing this approximately November 15th. There are three homes that are north of the structure between the bridge and Mount Vernon Road, so they'll have to go to the north and go around that way. This is in effect going to close that bridge for the winter. We will not reopen the bridge until this next spring, until we are able to do an inspection or have our, our bridge consultant come out and do an inspection on that structure. So obviously, we are ending, we are very near the end of the service life of this bridge. It is most likely that in the next one or two years, our inspectors are going to go out and say, hey, this bridge has to be closed now. So I'm going to be sending a letter to these, these three individuals, and of course, there are many, there are several agricultural fields in this portion of roadway. Just to let people know that we're going to need to stop plowing. We're effectively closing the road for the winter. And it's not going to be long before the bridge is permanently closed. The other bridge that I needed to update you on is the East Bennington Road Bridge, and this is the structure that we have already closed. And we were, it was my intent to remove the structure, and I had told you that we would be holding another public hearing when we were, when we are able to. We did hold a public hearing approximately three years ago, and Chris, you were at that meeting, and we just updated people on the fact that we would most likely not be replacing it. We had budgeted to remove that structure in this coming, this fiscal year. We can't continue to leave that money in this, this year's, this fiscal year. We need to put a project together where we can wait it out till we can have a public meeting with, you know, and speak to people in person. I can send a letter to those people saying that we are moving ahead with the closure, or if you prefer, we can wait till we have a public meeting. Do you have any thoughts on this structure?
I would still prefer to have the public meeting because I think the sentiment in the room was pretty mixed on the future of the bridge.
So we'll probably defer the removal of that structure again for another year, possibly put it in FY '22 budget or construction plans. And then lastly, winter driving season is upon us, as you all know, so I would urge the public to put down their phones, to slow down, and to please give our snowplows plenty of room out on the roads. Can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Any other department heads or elected officials wish to give an update this morning? Alright, we will move on to the minutes approved from the October 20th meeting.
So moved, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, the minutes are approved. Next is consent agenda. This will be approved with a single resolution.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Anything in the consent agenda? Anybody that wishes to discuss or has questions on? Alright, hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Little?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Yes. Resolution is approved. Next, under reports, this is going to be an update from Ben Del Gardell, doing business as Urban Services Incorporated, regarding the wash, burn, sanitary sewer system.
Morning, Paul.
Good morning.
Morning.
I don't have too much of an update other than the regular maintenance being done with the, the fall discharge we started, I believe, last Wednesday and did... Sorry, we started Monday and did our samples on Wednesday last week for the discharge. That'll happen for about four weeks. We did have a lot of water last fall that filled the lagoons up. The other piece of maintenance that's happening would be that influent manhole, and since it's getting cold, this has to be done after the discharge. So if we get into November and the ground's frozen, we won't be able to do this project. It can't wait till spring, so I'm hoping to get it done this fall. Sorry, I'm having problems with my phone here. Hoping to get that project done this fall, but the weather's really going to guide us on when we get this done. So in the spring, we discharge in April. That ends in May. The ground will be sufficient at that time, but we don't want to be digging in frozen ground. It'd just cause more problems for the entire process, so. That's basically all I have for updates. The summer was really slow for service calls, which was good. For July and August, we were really dry in those months, so we saw a drop in service calls for the summer. Any questions?
Any questions, Board? Alright, thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to other business. This is a resolution that the taxes submitted on properties which have come into public ownership through community development efforts, public infrastructure improvement, of public purpose acquisition be abated and to instruct the county treasurer to adjust her records accordingly pursuant to Section 427.2 and Section 445.63 of the Code of Iowa in the total amount of $40,042.3.
So moved, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Felka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes. The resolution is approved. Next is a resolution that the taxes on submitted properties be abated under Section 445.6 of the Code of Iowa, as Blackhawk County Treasurer has determined it is impractical to pursue collection of the total amounts due through the tax sale and personal judgment remedy, and has little recourse for collection of taxes to authorize county treasurer to strike from the tax lists the references to the past due amounts of the amount of $4,845.
So moved, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions?
Yes, I have a question, Rita, if you don't mind. I was going to say for these particular items that you have listed, that it's impractical to pursue collection. There were several in there that I recognized names of individuals in our community. So I was wondering what that means as far as what has been attempted or when that decision is made that it's impractical?
A couple of them are on inactive properties where the parcel has been retired, and it just kind of lingered out there as a tax sale. So it's a tax sale on something that doesn't exist anymore, and several of them were building on leased land that were removed, and we discovered that they were gone now. So or little strips of land. So it may be individuals that you recognize, but they're not feasible to, to pursue, and the individuals that own it do not plan on paying. Now, the inactive parcel is gone. It's, it's not going to ever be taxed again, but these still have taxes due each year, just like a regular. This will make it available for those to bid at the tax sale. When they're in Blackhawk County hands, and we're not going to pursue it because of the condition or the smallness of the parcels, the taxes will still accrue on that and still will be offered at the annual tax sale come June of 2021.
From a, what is historical or typical amounts, I see in this list, it ranges anywhere from $3 to like $4,000.
The one was, the larger one, and that was the one that was retired parcel. And the others are all under $100, and to pursue personal judgment against them, it's not worth the work and the process to do that. And so that's where the larger one, which is probably half of this $4,800, was on that parcel. And I think with the conversion over to Tyler, we've discovered a few of these that we didn't, they've been kind of off the radar because of the size, and and then also with this inactivity, the property, that parcel number doesn't exist anymore. So we're kind of doing some cleanup work on that.
Thanks very much.
Okay.
Any further questions or discussion? Alright, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes. The resolution is approved. Next is the motion that the purchase of capital, for capital equipment submitted by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer, be approved and direct chair to sign for the same. Purchase one new Hoon GMD 240 disc mower in the amount of $10,643.81 from Dumont Implement of Dumont, Iowa.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Kathy?
Yeah, as I told you in the emails, we have budgeted in the FY '21 budget $15,000 for a new disc mower. These are the mowers that mow the gravel road system, that we use to mow the gravel road system. We do have two of them, and then we also have another one that needs replacing. So this is, just to keep our fleet going, we would like to keep the same type of mower. That way, we can have one type of part in stock, and our mechanics know how to repair that mower then. So I would ask that this be approved.
Alright, any further discussion or questions, Board? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, the motion carries. Next is a motion, request of purchase of capital equipment submitted by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer, be approved and direct chair to sign for the same. Purchase two Hotsey 5555SS hot water pressure washers in the amount of $7,400 from Hotsey Equipment Company of Denver, Iowa.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Kathy?
Yeah, I also sent you information on this purchase. We have budgeted $8,000 for two pressure washer machines in the FY '21 budget. We do like the Hotsey brand. We have it currently in the Longfellow shop, the Elk Run shop, and of course, we recently purchased it for the new Gilmoreville shop. By purchasing these two machines, we would have Hotseys in all of our shops. These are pressure washers that use hot water to clean the machines, and they're much more effective than a, than a hose that we have had at many of our other buildings. And we're able to put a neutralizing agent into the pressure washer after we're done washing it, and that this, of course, takes place after the winter maintenance or winter plowing activities. So please approve this.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions, Board? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Next is discussion, county preparedness and possible updates for COVID-19. Are there any updates in the mood? Yes, Nafisa?
Good morning, Board. So per usual, our numbers have been increasing for the past month, well, few weeks in October. We've had very high numbers. The highest we've been is at 82 cases about a week ago per day. We're seeing that the numbers are, the, really, when it comes to the age categories, it's spread out. 19 to 39 years of age make up 42% of our cases, so we know it's also impacting the younger age groups and the elderly as well. We are, also, we've been in communication with the healthcare systems, and they are also inundated, and so it's, we're just getting into a very tough season. We're still working on our campaigns promoting masks and preventative measures. I did request to speak at the EMA meeting. I do need more local support because it's also impacting just our rural areas as well. So hopefully, with our elected officials, I'm able to, to inform them so that they also can do some of that communication through the different media outlets in the smaller towns. But we're just, we're getting through our disease investigation and contact tracing, so that's been, that's been very helpful. The Board of Health had approved for us to be able to operationalize it based on our numbers. And so right now, with including some of our community health workers, we have nine contact tracers. And because the guidance also from the state has changed from the CDC in terms of contact tracing and also defining exposure with, you know, at the state level, if you, you're wearing a mask and you're 15 feet apart, I'm sorry, six feet apart for 15 cumulative minutes, they don't consider it as an exposure. And so we've had to use some of our contact tracing tracers in more of a disease investigation capacity, but I've communicated with the courier yesterday. I'm doing KWWL today at 1:00. So we're just really trying to continue to get word out also about who vaccinated. This is the time to do it, but our numbers are high. It's impacting our healthcare systems, and they're also trying to figure out how they can support public health as best as they can, but we're just, I mean, this is, this is going to be a tough season, so that's where we're at. Staff are working Monday through Sunday, and, and we've tried to build in some, some capacity to be able to give people some flexibility during the weekends. But, yeah, it's just, it's, it's a tough season, so.
Would it be possible to get an update from you, from your department every day on the numbers? I think that would be nice for us to have, seeing as how we've been getting calls on a daily basis, wondering what's going on.
Oh, most definitely. So I, I can definitely email, email you all the numbers every day. Usually, we publish them around 1:00 o'clock or so, between 1:00 and 2:00, but I can, I can send you all that communication.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, I can, I can definitely do that.
How are, how is hospital capacity doing in the, in the community? I know the hospitalization rates are up in different parts of the state.
Yeah, so, and just getting some feedback from the medical directors, their, their inpatient numbers are definitely up, and for, for both Mercy One and Unity Point. They don't have as many in ICUs, and they're seeing, for example, for Unity Point, an average of 18 to 20, 22 COVID patients. They're also impacted because some of the cases are also with staff. So there's staffing shortage that's also happening with both systems in terms of just nursing staffing shortage. And, you know, for me, the saddest part is also we're getting people that are deciding to, to, our DNRs, and so very tough, but, yeah, so both healthcare systems are just, they're, they're feeling it as well. So we're, we're also going to change our matrix. The, the state matrix, I, I do believe that it's not really clearly representing the different levels that we need to be at. You know, for example, at the state level, they're considering it to be, when you look at the cases for, for Blackhawk County or any other location, it, it has to be greater than 100, 100 cases a day for us to, to change our levels, but when you see the, the, how our numbers have been increasing over these past few weeks, we need to change our matrix, and we're seeing that communication even through Facebook of how do we consider it to be moderate when our numbers are going up? And, and, and that's really because we're using the state, state's matrix, but I've asked the team to dig in a little bit more and, and, and really for us to look at our, our levels, and we will most likely change it because we, we do need people to, to take this seriously. And so I'm encouraged. I do see people wearing face masks, but we do need to do better of promoting it. And, and not only just face masks, but the social distancing is, is very important, washing the hands. The cases that we're seeing also has to do with household, and so we're seeing a lot of that, so a lot of intermingling among family. And, and, and really, this is not the time. I know it's very sad. I know it's been very difficult, but people with underlying conditions have to, have to really, we, we have to do our part of protecting them, and they also have to really do their part of, of social distancing. So I'll communicate with KWWL today at 1:00 because there's been questions about holidays, what to do for Thanksgiving and Christmas, and so that communication will go out, but you know, when, when you hear some of the information coming out of the hospitals, I mean, it's just, it's just a tough season we're going into. But we, we do need to change, change our matrix because moderate is, I, I think in, in average language is considered to be less serious, but we are in the, in, in the situation where we just, it, it is serious. But we're seeing it all across, you know, not just Blackhawk County, but different counties at the national level. It's a cold season, and, and when it's cold, we tend to be indoors more frequently, but we, we, we just, we have to do our part until a vaccine comes out. So I ask of you, I know we've had some difficult conversations, but my ask is to you all is to really continue to promote those preventative measures, as difficult as it may be. I, I, I need the county supervisors also to do that. I'm talking to the local elected officials as well, and our healthcare systems. You know, I think we're, we're just asking ourselves, what is it that we can do more? I'm open to any suggestions, but our, our numbers are going up.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion on this from the board? We move on to reports and information from the board. Yes, I would like to share my condolences with the family and many friends of my friend Alex Martin, who died really unexpectedly this past weekend. He is a really great example, I think, for how individuals who are somewhere on the autism or Asperger's spectrum can be really remarkable and contributing members of the community, and in a full vibrant way. He was a, a great activist and a great lover of books and enjoyed working at the Waterloo Public Library, and he'll be really sorely missed by myself and Logan and many, many people in the community. Alright, there are no other reports. We will be taking a recess until 3:00 today, when we will be coming back for the bond resolution. Alright, we're at recess.
So we remember to come back.
I know. Yes.
Okay, it is 3:00, and I'll call to end our, our recess. This is a meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors. Next on the agenda is a resolution directing the sale of $14 million of general obligation bonds. This is Series 2020, subject to adjustment for the terms of offering.
Good afternoon. Maggie, I will let you kind of kick it off, but we held our bond sale at 10:00 a.m. today with one bond or one bidder, and the true interest rate was 1.0192%. So what that kind of gets into, Maggie, I'll let you kind of take it from here, but, but, yeah, overall, we're really happy with it, so.
Thank you very much, everyone. I hope you can all hear me. Maggie Berger with Spear Financial. As James mentioned, we did have the bond sale this morning on $14 million of general obligation bond Series 2020. I will remind you that included in this bond was the road and bridge project that you, as the county, have coming up. There is solid waste commission money in there that was made a presentation to you by John Foster, and we had refunding bonds of the 2010B and the 2011. Those bonds, I do want to state, were originally for the county and your own county purposes, like CIP, roads and bridges, that did not have anything to do with any 911 sanitary landfill or anything like that, or, or any landfill solid waste commission in the past. You can see that we are recommending the bid from Robert W. Baird. It was the only bid, and I will talk a little bit about that. At a true interest rate of 1.0192%, they are going to pay you $483,362.65 in a premium. As part of the, this bond issue, I mentioned that we had refunding, and we'll go into a little bit more depth on that refunding in the packet of information. But you have a gross realized savings off of the refunding today of $282,662.60 or a net present value, which does consider aging of money. It doesn't consider some inflationary factors, projected inflationary factors. So the net present value savings is $273,674.61. The county did go through the aspect of having a Moody's rating performed, and so I'm happy to report that Blackhawk County has maintained its AA2 rating. We've provided that report to you. Not a lot of changes in the report, not anything new, and we did talk to the analysts that there's nothing that was of concern to the committee from where you're standing financially, from your debt profile. You know, demographics still tends to be the one thing that drags. Your rating will stay down, even though it's the AA2, which is just two notches off the top. Demographics, unfortunately, are something that a lot of times are out of your control. But remember, they're putting you on what's called a global scale, that is across the board, all of their credits in the AA2 range. So they do always talk about what could lead to a downgrade, and of course, the first bullet point is weakening of reserves or liquidity. So always be cognizant of what you're going to spend those dollars on. That goes on for a couple, three pages. Then we do give you a copy of what Robert Baird's bid was. Those were 2% coupons, all the way down. This was a 10-year bond. The portion that is attributable to the county itself is shorter than that. The 10 years, you're, you're doing, I think, a seven-year portion. The ten years, you're doing, I think, a seven-year portion. The ten years really that is attributable is to the actual solid waste commission part of the bond issue. We also want to point out that Robert Baird gave us their syndicate on that page. And that just means that they have a lot of bidders with them saying, if you are the winning bidder, we will take some of this deal from you. Included in that syndicate are Bernardi Securities, Northland Country Club Bank. We also see that it's First Bankers Bank Securities. Those are all securities and groups that would have bought your deal or probably bid on your deal at ten million dollars or less. Always going into a deal with fourteen million dollars, we know that we are going to compress the number of bidders. And the reason is, is it's just a very large amount. They have to take all of it. And you find that you get one or two bidders with large amounts of syndicates. This is something that's commonly happened in the past also when we've gone out, but we're very happy with today's rate. We've given you the final debt service schedule that has a call feature after June 1st of 2027. So that's when those bonds become callable or you could refinance them at that time if interest rates are lower than the two percent. On the old bonds, you're replacing the 2010B interest rates that were at 3.15 to 3.5. You're now replacing those with two percent. And that gives you a pretty phenomenal savings of approximately seventy-three thousand dollars. And then you're replacing the 2011 coupons that were a three percent down to a 3.375 with those two percent coupons. And that's what gives you about a two hundred thousand dollar savings. So again, really phenomenal savings overall today for the county. We're very happy with this. The one other thing I want to mention is because of, because of the increase or because of the premium, I remind you, you're still only borrowing fourteen million dollars. They're giving you the four hundred and eighty-three thousand. Everyone benefits slightly from the premium dollars that you're receiving. But we have to, what's called net zero the refunding, which means we have to move money out of the refunding bonds because of the premium, meaning we can't have excess cash in the, in the refunding bonds because they have to come out to a zero. We have to take out the refunding with what it costs to pay off the old debt, cost of issuance, accrued interest. So with that being said, that moves one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars of principal to the county's portion of the borrowing. Again, still only borrowing fourteen million, but now you're going to get one hundred and ninety-five thousand extra dollars in your project fund for that project, for that road project, which I'm sure no one will balk at having the ability to spend those dollars. If you don't spend them, you can put them in the debt service fund to buy down or abate the property taxes. Just like we did in the fall, we were limited in public hearing authority. So Steve Nadal, your bonding attorney, has sent a document today to James Perry that will get published in the newspaper this week for next Tuesday that acknowledges, it's a public hearing that will acknowledge this extra one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Again, you're not borrowing any more than you anticipated. It's just that, that's how that works out when we get that kind of a premium. So I would be happy to answer any questions that you have, but we would recommend that you pass the resolution today, awarding to Robert W. Baird at 1.0192%.
Maggie, I got a question. This is Tom.
Yes.
So the county's portion of the bond is going to be for seven years?
Correct.
The, was there two bonds we relieved?
Yes, it was the 2010B and the 2011. And those remain in the same maturity that they were set to originally pay off in. So the 2010B, that's a very good question, Tom. The 2010B will pay off in 2023 as it was originally scheduled to do. And the 2011 was originally scheduled to pay off in 2026. And the refunding portion of that will pay off in 2026. So when you do look at the final debt service schedule, it does look like what we've called front-loaded debt, meaning there's very large payments in the first seven years of this bond issue, partially due to the refunding and partially due to the fact that the county's portion pays off in that seven-year period. The last three payments of this debt service truly are just on the solid waste commission.
Okay, and then the other question, Maggie, for the record, the, when we do the solid waste, this is the second time, I think, within a year we did solid waste bonding. Does that go against the county's bond limit?
So it, it will count against the county's debt capacity because you're doing it as a general obligation debt. But you will not pay any property taxes for this portion, the solid waste commission's portion of the debt. They have, will enter into a loan agreement, they actually did enter into a loan agreement that clearly states they will owe you every six months their interest and their principal and interest payment for their portion of the debt. So there will be no property taxes levied for the solid waste portion of this debt.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, board, any other questions?
Yeah, Maggie, this is Linda. I have a question. They talked about the factors that could lead to a downgrade, and one of those was the material growth to the debt burden. Any idea what that is, other than just kind of a?
Yeah, so you, so you as a, as a county have a very large debt capacity. It's five percent of your 100% actual valuation. I would tell you this, probably in your situation, looking at it today, if you went out and tried to issue a hundred million dollars of bonds, that probably leads to a downgrade. But if you were going to go out and issue ten, twelve, thirteen, or fourteen million dollars of bonds, probably doesn't lead to a downgrade. They're talking a material growth to the debt burden. They would be talking hundreds of millions of dollars in bonding at this point in time. Now, it's not to say that we should take that lightly and just go out and feel like we can do ten and twelve million dollar issuances. Part of it, I will say, is that you are aggressively paying this debt back. So a fourteen million dollar bond issued to be paid back over ten years actually is quite aggressive. And that's what they like to see. So that helps keep that debt burden low because you do aggressively pay that debt back. It is when we start to do fourteen million dollar issuances over fifteen and twenty years that we should pay a little bit more attention to that.
Thank you.
Maggie, I got one more question for you.
Yeah.
Over the years, and we haven't done it recently, in the last two or three, four, or five years that I know of, but we used to meet yearly with Moody's. We would alternate, we would send representatives from the county to Chicago to meet with Moody's, and then they would come here to Blackhawk County the next year. We haven't done that for a few years, not sure why we stopped. Is there any advantage to, to start that process back again?
Yeah, so that's a very interesting question. And I will tell you, if it wasn't 2020, we would have been inviting Moody's out or we would have been taking you in for a size issuance of fourteen million dollars. It would have been our intent that this year. And we actually had conversations internally with your administration that that probably would have been a visit because it has been a couple, three years where we've gone in and made a presentation or invited them out. Same goes for, you know, City of Waterloo, kind of, we've done that a couple of times where the visit came and they would spend a day or a half a day with City of Waterloo. They do the same with Blackhawk County, maybe also with Hawkeye Community College. We were hoping to have them out this spring. Obviously, that did not happen because of the pandemic and we anticipate that, you know, it's going to probably be another six to twelve months before we could do that. But I do believe that having a future in-person meeting with them, whether that's in Chicago or whether that is in Waterloo, is probably to the benefit. Now, I will say, going into Chicago for maybe, you know, a two or a three million dollar bond issue probably doesn't, it's probably hard to justify that cost. But if they happen to be coming out to Iowa for another visit with another client, we definitely would piggyback on that meeting as well. But if we were, again, set to do fourteen million dollars, could give a presentation about the landfill, could give a presentation about this road project, things like that, things that we could show off, we'll say, then that definitely warrants probably a visit with them. So I do anticipate that in the future. Personally, I have an office in Chicago. I haven't been there since the first week of December last year, so.
I, yeah, throw out year 2020, I kind of was wondering why we weren't doing it in the years passed because we were doing it continually every year. So I think it would be a good process once, once things settle down to get back into that yearly. Even if we're not selling bonds, I thought it was more just to kind of give them an update on our, what's going on in Blackhawk County and possibly improving our rating, if that's even possible to do that.
And I will say it was always tied to selling bonds. You won't, you won't get them to give you any kind of feedback or anything unless you're paying them to rate you. So it has been in the past tied, but I will remind you, you are correct. It was an annual thing. Because you were selling bonds annually, you had that large, you know, seven-year plan where each and every year we sold between seven and fifteen million dollars of debt for road projects. So you're right, it was definitely an annual, you know, an annual visit with them, whether that was in Chicago or whether that was locally. So as we approach future bond issues and as we get beyond the pandemic, we definitely are going to talk about that and look at that. Because again, we anticipated that this bond issue probably would have had an in-person meeting, so.
Okay, and then the other last question, real quick. In the report from Moody's, when they were giving us our rating and so forth, the country view was always a strike against us. And obviously now we don't have country views. So is there a possibility to improve our rating with Moody's? Or are we pretty much at the max where we probably will always end up?
Yeah, no, I think there definitely is room for improvement. You are sitting on a AA2, the next notch up is a AA1 and then a AAA. I don't discount the fact that Blackhawk County probably couldn't get to the AA1. It is something that we have worked and strived for. I will tell you that they're not handing out any kind of upgrades right now because again, there, there are concerns about the social impact as well as the financial impact of COVID on many communities, counties, just like yourself. So until the pandemic is, we'll say, in our rearview mirror, I don't think that they're going to be passing out any upgrades. But I do think that you sit financially in a position that could get upgraded. As we talked and as they, they mentioned on our phone call, there, the one thing that's holding you back honestly from that upgrade is demographics. But I think also we may see a change in demographics per the census. So remember, we're in a census year. And next year, we're going to have some new information and that could change, you know, financially what, that could change your demographics a little bit. And so we'll be anxious to see that demographic change. And if there is a change, then again, I think that potentially, you know, there are many areas on the scorecard, their rating methodology, that you will sit in that AAA, which means I think there's some room for improvement in your rating.
Okay, good information, thank you.
Yep.
Maggie, I just have, I think, like one final question, too. Obviously, it's always good to have competition when you're bidding. But as you said, when you have such a large bonding amount, that limits who will be interested in it and who can handle that. Is there a number, not that it would have been advantageous for us at all to do two different bonds, but is there a number that one would look at to have more competition?
Yeah, so we kind of had a conversation about that. So in the fall, your bonds were bank-qualified. These bonds were not bank-qualified due to the size. So any issuance, any single-day issuance over, over ten million dollars becomes non-bank-qualified. And that will knock a few bidders out, but it still leads to the fact that there's a hefty amount of bidders that are still in the market. I am happy that Robert Baird is the one that bought it. They are a very active bidder in Iowa and buy a lot of deals, whether they're bank-qualified or not bank-qualified. So it really, that, that number that you're looking for, that magic number, would have been ten million. We knew that you needed four million, we knew that the solid waste needed about 4.5 million. But we had these really great refundings also. It would have cost you a lot more, it would have eaten up pretty much probably about half of the savings that you got off of the refunding if we would have gone out and done that as a separate issuance today as well. And so I don't know, I think you're right. I don't think we would have had a better result today. It would have cost you a little bit more money, but it is that bank-qualified versus non-bank-qualified. There's still tax-exempt obligations, there's still great investments. It's just that you don't get as many financial institutions to look at it as you do more underwriting firms, mutual funds, insurance companies.
Thank you, thanks very much.
All right, board, would someone like to offer a motion on the resolution?
Motion to approve.
All right, so moved and seconded. Do we have any further discussion or questions? All right, hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Leland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Felka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
It's worked.
Yes, the resolution is approved. Now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Yes, we're moved and seconded. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? This means adjourned, thank you, everyone.